Our final three panels will focus on the Commission's proposed amendment regarding first offenders and alternatives to incarceration. Our first panelists on this topic will be Andrew Lelling and Miriam Conrad. Mr. Lelling is the United States Attorney for the District of Massachusetts, a position he has held since December 2017. Before his appointment, he was a federal prosecutor for over 15 years, serving first in the Civil Rights Division at the Department of Justice and later at the U.S. Attorney's Offices for the Eastern District of Virginia and the District of Massachusetts. Before joining the Justice Department, Mr. Lelling was in private practice, and he once clerked for then-Chief Judge B. Avant-Eddenfield of the Southern District of Georgia in my circuit. I knew Judge Eddenfield. Mr. Lelling is a graduate of the Binghamton University and the University of Pennsylvania Law School. Ms. Conrad has been the federal public defender for the districts of Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island since 2005. She became an Assistant Federal Defender in 1992 after working as a trial attorney for the Committee for Public Counsel Services, the State Public Defender's Office. She is Vice Chair of the Defenders Sentencing Guidelines Committee. After graduating from Harvard Law School, cum laude, she clerked for Judge Zobel of the U.S. District Court in Boston. She earned a bachelor's degree in Journalism from Northwestern University.
Another fine.
Another.[117.22][117.22](Laughter). Indeed. Mr. Lelling.
Thank you, Judge Pryor, and members of the Sentencing Commission for having me today for the opportunity to present the department's views on the proposed amendments concerning first offenders and alternatives to incarceration. The department respectfully disagrees with these amendments. I'll start with the proposal that defendants who qualify as first offenders should receive a one- or two-level reduction from the otherwise applicable offense level. As the initial matter has written, this proposal would apply across all offense types, ignoring the fact that first offenders are not necessarily nonviolent and have not necessarily committed a minor offense, but instead may have committed a very serious one. This is especially so in the white-collar context, where defendants are often first-time offenders and often commit serious predatory frauds (excuse me) that destroy the financial lives of victims. Ponzi schemes, which are not uncommon, are a good example. Similarly, the amendment would apply to distribution of child pornography, selling fentanyl, murder-for-hire, or other morally egregious offenses. The primary rationale offered for this across-the-board change is that defendants with zero criminal history points have the lowest rate of recidivism, clocking in at about 30 percent. The department has a few concerns with this approach. Initially, this rationale reminds me of the metaphor about glasses being half-empty or half-full, since, of course, a 30 percent recidivism rate means that about 1 in 3 offenders are offending again despite the expense and extreme stress of a federal prosecution. This is not a low figure. Second, the low recidivism rationale only makes sense as a reason for lower federal sentences if we ignore all sentencing considerations in 18 U.S.C. 3553 except for specific deterrents. Considerations of general deterrents especially, respect for the law, protecting the public, and just punishment are equally important, yet do not seem to have figured into the Commission's rationale for the proposed amendments. Third, correlation is not causality. That is, the recidivism rate among first offenders might be lower precisely because of the federal penalties that are currently in place to deter them from offending again, but the proposed amendment would surely lessen the deterrent effect of the federal penalties that are currently available. Using the Commission's own data, in 2014, this proposal would have lowered the sentencing guideline ranges for 5,700 drug dealers, about 80 percent of whom trafficked in opioids, meth (opiates, heroin), or cocaine, addictive, dangerous substances; 3,600 fraud defendants, over 1,000 alien smugglers, 940 child pornographers, and 300 robbery defendants. These are real crimes. The Commission should not amend the guidelines to encourage lower sentences for them. Just because someone is a first offender does not mean that they are a minor offender, but the proposed amendment does not draw that distinction. Turning to alternatives to incarceration for first offenders, the amendment would recommend that first offenders receive sentences other than imprisonment if they are in Zone A or B, and their offensive conviction was not a crime of violence and did not involve a firearm or dangerous weapon. The department's concerned that the practical impact of this proposal would be to provide first offenders with an offense level of 11, or if all aspects of the amendments were accepted, of 13 or below, a presumptive guideline range of 0 to 0. So if you're a first-time offender and your guideline range is, say, 13 or below if the entire amendment were adopted, it is most likely that you would not go to jail at all. The proposal offers little support for this significant change in sentencing policy. White-collar defendants would receive the most benefit from this proposal. Tax fraud is of a particular concern. 81 percent of tax fraud defendants are in criminal history category 1. I would wager that the bulk of those have no criminal history points at all. But in Section 2 T 1.1 of the guidelines, the Commission has already recognized the inherent limits of the government's ability to prosecute tax fraud and the acute need for general deterrents. So it's widespread, and it's hard to detect. Meanwhile, under the current guidelines, courts already routinely give tax defendants sentences well below the guideline range. About 25 percent of such sentences are within the guideline range. But there's a deeper, in some ways more subtle, issue here. In the post-Booker world, federal courts already have near-total discretion to vary downwards when it suits them and impose alternatives to incarceration. And courts have routinely exercised this discretion, as the Commission's own data has shown. So the amendment remedies no particular perceived injustice. All it does do is signal to the courts that certain offenses are taken less seriously than others, a signal that courts will use to impose sentences well below whatever incremental adjustments the Commission may intend with these amendments. Finally, I'd like to address the proposed amendment to consolidate Zones B and C. The Commission has already addressed this issue seven years ago when it expanded Zones B and C. That had an impact. A higher percentage of defendants now find themselves in Zone B, and that has had an impact on sentencing. Finally, combined these -- if you combine all aspects of the Commission's proposed amendments, the impact would be that a first-time offender in a white-collar case who causes about $100,000 of loss or less simply will not go to prison, and that is not in the public interest. Thank you for the opportunity to share the department's views on these important issues. I look forward to answering your questions.
Ms. Conrad.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Judge Pryor, for inviting me here today and for allowing me to speak on behalf of the defenders on this very important proposal. The defenders are grateful for the Commission's willingness to consider putting into effect guidelines that reflect its findings about reduced risks of recidivism for defendants with zero criminal history points or who are first offenders, and to alleviate prison overcrowding and encourage alternative sentences for those who would benefit from them in terms of reduced recidivism and who would not pose a danger to public safety. Now, I'm going to deviate for a moment from what I wrote in advance, because I'd like to address some of the points made by Mr. Lelling, who I've had the pleasure to know and work with or not actually against, but have cases with for quite a number of years. And I have tremendous respect for Mr. Lelling's intelligence, practicality, and so forth. But I think that there is a fundamental flaw in the department's position with respect to these proposals, maybe two fundamental flaws. One is they act as if this reduction is a get-out-of-jail-free card. It's a one- or two-level reduction in the offense level. Major fraudsters, major drug traffickers are not going to be looking at probation. They're not going to be in Zones A or B. They are still going to have extremely high offense levels. And I have my little, pocket-sized copy of the table that I carry with me everywhere.
Should we look at our web-based app?
I'm really excited about the app. If only the jails --
It's going to change your life.
If only the jails would let me take my iPad or my iPhone into the prison to visit my clients, then it would be awesome. But it's still awesome. So anyway...
Some judges, you never know about them, right?
Right. So at the lower levels, these reductions, even of two levels, would mean a decrease of three months at the low end of the guideline. At the higher ranges, the one-level reduction would still result in overlapping guideline ranges. So we're not talking about a major difference. In addition, and I think this is a really important point, the proposal with respect to combining Zones A and B and the proposed language that says, that gives meaning to 994-J when it says that ordinarily defendants who are first offenders, who are not convicted of violent offenses, should receive a non-incarcerative sentence, nothing in that says they have to. The judges are still free to impose appropriate imprisonment sentences in appropriate cases. This is not -- the government makes this sound like it's the reverse of a mandatory minimum, like it's a mandatory maximum. It's not. It just simply isn't. So then the question, I suppose, is, and this is part of what the department argues, why should we implement it? Because judges can vary anyway and so forth. And I think the answer, and it's an important one, is there is that the guidelines have historically exercised a gravitational pull on judges. Some judges give them more weight than others. Some judges give them more weight in some cases than others. But ultimately, they give a gravitational pull. And what these proposals in combination will do is they will give judges more of a reason to stop and to consider a sentence that does not involve incarceration. I think it's important to note the empirical evidence that supports this type of approach, not just, first of all, and most importantly, the very significant work that the Commission has done in the area of research on recidivism in a number of reports, but also the study that we cited that shows that for first offenders, probationary sentences can result in a lower rate of recidivism than prison. And this is something that was alluded to in the very interesting discussion on the prior panel with Judge Pryor and Ms. Price and the gentleman from the Drug Narcotics Officers Association, which is, you know, how much time is enough? And how much time is too much? And what are the collateral consequences, not just for the communities of imprisoning someone, but the collateral consequences for the individual? When people go to prison -- excuse me, when people are sentenced or found guilty of a felony, it has a huge impact on their livelihood, their employability, their home, and their family. When they go to prison and they come out, the hurdles that they face are even greater. We should be concerned, and I know this Commission and its staff is concerned, about what happens when they come out. I think the probation department has done a phenomenal job of working on measures, evidence-based measures, that can reduce recidivism. And they have shown in their most recent statistics that recidivism among those on supervision has declined, probably as a result of those. So I just, as a result of all of those points, I think this is an incredibly significant point. Of course, I haven't made all the points I had written down, so because I wanted to address, I think, what's before you now. And I see the red light is on, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Of course, we have your written testimony. Questions?
I have a question that I think goes to -- it's for both of you, which is, so the difference between somebody who is a first offender, you know, and we could talk about the different definitions that we have, versus someone with criminal history. So I guess maybe I'll start with the government's position, if I could, Mr. Lelling. The government, I assume, would agree that that is a -- that those are different, I mean, all else being equal, if you have someone who's committing an offense for the very first time versus someone who has a criminal history, that they are -- that is a meaningful difference between the two, if everything else was equal about them.
Well, the difficulty with that, the difficulty with the question as you're phrasing it, is that the Commission's proposal is --
But I know, I understand. Don't worry about the proposal. I'm just trying to -- I understand what the government's issue was with how the proposal was written, but because what I want to get to a place is, if you agree with that, I want to try to figure out which categories of first offenders don't raise the sum of the issues that you have here. Because when you talk about, well, they could be orchestrators of the world's largest Ponzi scheme, or armed carjackers, or child sex abuse, if we could put aside, because 994-J tells us that we shouldn't do this for the violent and serious first offenders, if we can identify that category, and we might not all agree what that is, but that category of people who, they are genuine first offenders, and therefore, they should be treated differently from people who have repeated criminal activity. And so I'm just trying to get -- first, I just want to make sure that I'm right, that the department does agree that someone who's doing something for the very first time is, in fact, should be treated differently than someone who's a repeat offender.
All other things, other things being --
Equal, exactly.
Well, of course, and the guidelines do.
Okay, so that's the -- well, the guidelines --
The guidelines build in.
In Category 1 has groups of people together that actually don't treat them differently.
Well, then, it's sort of a two-step answer. One, yes, I think there's a substantial difference between a person who has no prior conviction and a person with a prior conviction that happens to fall outside the parameters of 4C 1.1. I think those are two very different kinds of people.
So we could define first offender, let's say for just the moment, that we're talking about somebody who has no convictions whatsoever. Okay? And so it's the difference between that person and someone who does -- so not the aged-out of convictions, not, you know, falls out for other reasons, but they have no convictions on their record. This is the very first time they're in contact with the criminal justice system.
So assuming the person with no convictions, yes, as the guidelines reflect, the person with more convictions who commits a later offense is treated more harshly than someone with no conviction.
Well, but we currently lump them together in Category 1. And so what we're trying to figure out is if, in fact, we should separate out those two groups of people, and then, and it sounds like you agree, they are different. So then the next question is, are there certain serious violent types of crimes where that distinction doesn't matter because the underlying current offense is so serious that the fact that it's a -- if it's the first time you kill many people, you know, the fact that it's a first offense really isn't the relevant factor there. Your underlying substantive events is doing the culpability work. But what I -- so my next question for you is, in trying to figure out what kinds of offenses would fit the answer to my question for you, the kinds of things, is there anything that the government would recognize is a non-serious, non-violent type of offense? Because I tried to read your comments to figure out what that would be, and I couldn't figure out if you would recognize that there was any.
Well, of course, there are non-serious and non-violent offenses, and non-serious, non-violent offenses already skew to the very low end of the guideline.
But I'd like you to just, for me, identify what those are. Because I hear what you're saying, but I guess, so our issue is that, right now, they're all in Category 1. And if we wanted to separate out those people who have not had a conviction before in Category 1, it'd be helpful for me if you could identify the non-serious, non-violent.
Is your question, what crime is sufficiently non-serious that the Commission could justify an extra level off?
I would phrase it differently, which is, we're statutorily obligated under 994-J to treat the crimes that are not violent and serious differently when someone's a first offender. And so I'm trying to identify what Congress told us we have to do. So I want the Department of Justice to tell me which crimes are the ones that don't meet 994-J's definition of violent and serious.
Well, two things. First, it seems to me the Commission has already managed requirements under 994, a statute that's been around probably, well, I'm going to hazard almost as long as the Commission has been around. And I think what the guidelines do is skew higher for violent crimes and skew higher for serious crimes than they do for non-violent and less serious crimes.
I'm sorry. I apologize. You want to try? Okay.[1167.65][1167.65](Laughter).
Let's take an offender with no criminal history points, no prior conviction of any kind. Do you think that there are certain kinds of offenses where the guidelines should presume a non-incarceration sentence? And if so, how would we go about determining what those offenses are?
Well, first, yes, I think there are offenses where it can be appropriate to have a non-incarcerative result. I think the guidelines already show you where that is.
A presumption, though. Do you think that there ought to be a presumption for some offenders who are no criminal history points, no prior convictions, who have certain non-violent, less serious offenses? How would we go about determining, just for them, where there should be a presumption of a non-incarceration sentence? Would it be, say, offense level 13 and below?
Thank you. No.
Okay. What would it be?
Well, I think it would be Zone A. I think the guidelines already take a shot at showing you what class of crimes should fall in that area. I think the greater difficulty, which I think you are perhaps implying, Your Honor, is the word presumption. Is it a presumption? I don't think the department would agree it should be a presumption. I think the guidelines already reflect that for certain kinds of crimes, it can be appropriate. I think that's so, and I think we see that in the courts every day. I think presumption would be too strong for the department's blood.
Is the problem with the question that it's usurping the job of the judge to make that determination after the arguments have been made about whether someone should or should not receive an incarcerated sentence?
Well, I think that that's right, and I think my other hesitation is that you could have a first-time offender, a true first-time offender, who has committed a crime, as Professor Barco implied, who's committed a crime so serious that the fact of first-time offense is simply irrelevant. And that's just sort of a, that is a simple example of how complex the sentencing calculus is in every single case, as each judge considers 18 different things to decide what sentence should be given. This proposal is driven by a single consideration, which is specific deterrents. That's it.
That's not true, actually, if I could just interject it. There's a proportionality concept that we're trying to get at, and I guess what I'm trying to -- I recognize that individual judges are in a good position to assess some of these things, and I appreciated your comment that, in a Booker world, that takes care of everything. But that would suggest we should disband as a commission, because we are still supposed to be setting principles for judges to follow, even in an advisory guideline regime, to try to bring some order to it. And so, I mean, yes, we could just let every individual judge decide in his or her case how to deal with it, but if we wanted to try to set some general principles, the questions for comment, and maybe the proposed amendment made you think that, but, you know, our questions for comment asked, you know, if this isn't the right way to do it, are there certain categories that should be in, certain categories that should be out? And that's what I was trying to get your help with, because I think with the guidelines, what we try to do is create a heartland environment, where if we say, hey, look, if the bulk of the people in the guidelines world were all committing homicides as their first offense, then I would say, well, you know, actually, it's kind of crazy to think about doing this. But that's not what the community of people in federal prison look like, and in fact, and they're not actually all world's largest Ponzi schemes, child sex abuse, armed carjackers, right? And so I was trying to figure out, in that heartland, what might be the cases that the government would recognize don't meet 994-J's definition of serious and violent, so we could sort of think about, this is the group of folks that it makes sense for this criminal history category, so think about zero points, because we have a ream of data now that the zero pointers are different than the one pointers. And so I just wanted to reflect the empirical reality about not just specific deterrents, but proportionality, and what we know as an empirical matter means, these are different categories of folks. And so I'm, at least I'm only speaking for myself now, when I try to go through the comments and figure out who's serious and violent and who isn't, I would love help in that regard, because to figure out who is, who are the zero pointers, who are really zero pointers, because our empirical evidence shows that is a different category, and who is that a different category for?
But the distinction you seek to draw, the guidelines already draw. If you have no criminal history points, the underlying premise of your concern is that the guidelines are too high, and we simply disagree. The guidelines already give an escalating scale of punishment based on how much of a criminal history you have, how much money was involved, how much drugs, how many people you hurt. If it's none, you're here. If it's lots, you're here. So the guidelines already contain the distinction that you are drawing. The underlying premise, though, I think, is that they're just too high as stated, or...
Well, I'm not quite sure of that. I mean, I'm not sure that that's the premise. I think that the battle is the presumption, is, and I've heard it from Judge Gleason, I've heard it from, I've heard it for years, which is, why are you sending white-collar people to prison? They have a lower rate of recidivism, and they, and as a general rule, their criminal history category is much lower. Why do they go to prison? Well, if you ask me, just as one judge, I agree with, actually, Sarbanes, who spoke to the Commission several years ago and was asked the question, what have you found effective in terms of white-collar crime? What's the effective penalty? Because we had to jack up penalties when that occurred. I wasn't on the Commission at that time, but that's actually what happened. And what Sarbanes said was, the deterrent, the real deterrent, is sending a white-collar offender to prison. That's the deterrent. If it makes, it's not, fine him, the shame of a felony, on and on and on. It is, that person serves some time in jail. He said, the question may be, how long should he go? That's a, that's a fair question. But from his experience, as an author of Sarbanes-Odsley, it was, send the person to prison. So I'm not, I mean, I think I'm much closer to the government's position than I, respectfully, than I am to yours, because I think you could take all the statistics, and we all know, as sitting judges, that that person who cheats on his income tax, that person who does the small scheme, that, those people, that person who commits a social security offense, stealing, you know, getting that extra money when, you know, when Grandma Sadie is dead, all those people, you know, I'll tell you, if they thought, well, all they'd have to do is pay it back and have the shame of a felony, my view, that's not enough. Okay. But I think the interesting question is, should we have a collapse of the second part, of the zones? Because if you collapse the zones, I think, or eliminate C, I think that really what you've done is just give courts a little bit more discretion with respect to appropriate sentencing. And I'm not quite sure why DOJ should be so opposed to it. I mean, I understand. I understand the rigor, and I understand their overall philosophy. But really, given what the, given what Congress has told us to do, which is to consider for first-time offenders this non-incarceration, why wouldn't that be achieved in part by the collapse of the zones?
If I may, just very briefly, thank you, Judge. First of all, it's not, 994-J doesn't just say, "Consider." 994-J says, "Ensure that the guidelines reflect the general appropriateness of imposing a sentence other than imprisonment." So just as 994-H, I think it is, says that the Commission shall ensure that someone with two prior violent offenses or drug convictions is a career offender and gets near the top, it's the sort of, you know, flip side of that. One has been implemented, the other one has not. With respect to Your Honor's point about the, you know, the securities fraud defendant who is really shaken by having to go to prison, that person is generally going to have a high-loss figure and a high offense level. That person, I would respectfully submit, is not the same as someone whose mother's social security checks keeps getting deposited, and that person uses it. That person is not only, and it's not just the shame of a felony conviction, that person may be barred from certain jobs, may be barred from certain benefits. I just would like to give, in response to Professor Barco's question to Mr. Lelling, one example of a recent case of somebody who was sentenced to prison, who would have benefited from these proposals, and perhaps Mr. Lelling will or won't agree that that person perhaps should have received probation, but I think it's illustrative. And that is a woman, a single mother with five children, two of them disabled, who was a bank teller, and she cashed fraudulent tax refund checks. She cooperated with the government. Her guideline range, her, two of her children, one of her children had complex medical issues. She lost her job, obviously, as a bank teller after she was arrested. She got a job as a manager in a group home where she was hardworking, worked foreign access... excess of 40 hours, caring for these adults with special needs. She was, her guideline range was 15 to 21 months, so offense level 13. Under the proposal, that would have been reduced down to either 12 or 11. She would have fallen in Zone C. That would have been collapsed.
Criminal history points?
She did not have any criminal history points. She would--
So, then, it's the loss, right? Your example has to be the loss.
Right.
And the loss before the acceptance of responsibility--
Correct.
--in your case would be--
About two, it was about $200,000.
$200,000.
Although, if she wa-- I mean, one could argue also, I'm sure she got abuse of position of trust as well, on top of that.
Okay, so--
Right. So, I mean, you know, all of those things were factored in. But the fact of the matter, this is a woman who had taken steps toward post-offense rehabilitation. Allowing her probation, perhaps with house arrest, would allow her to care for her children, would have lessened the burden on society, would have cost less, since prison costs eight, nearly eight times as much as supervision does, and would not have had the sort of ripple effect on her family, on the community, on the individuals she cared for in the group home, and so forth. So, you know, it seems to me that that's somebody, she got a year and a day, that that is someone for whom it would have been helpful for the judge to have had guidelines under the amendments that suggested that, A, a probationary sentence was available, and B, that it was something to be considered under the presumptive language that has proven to be so controversial today.
Let me change your hypothetical just a little bit.
Sure.
Let's add a defendant to it, the husband, who forces the bank teller to do all the terrible things that she did. They end up in the same zone, no criminal history. Under this proposal, both would be, there would be a presumption of no incarceration. Arguably, the wife would be entitled to that, but the husband wouldn't, but there'd still be a presumption for both of those. Those are essentially the same crimes.
And I would suggest that a judge would be more inclined, sentencing judge would be more inclined to adopt the presumption with respect to the woman, not because she's a woman, but because of her role in the offense.
The judge can do so now.
Not under the guidelines, only with a variance.
As the judge can do now.
Well, again--
That presumption. You're presuming, there are presumptions that go both ways, is my point.
Well, yes, and that's the point. The question is, should the presumption be reversed? Should the presumption for someone who is on the cusp between Zones C and D, should the presumption be reversed for that person where that person has no criminal history? And it's a rebuttable presumption, and I certainly could imagine an able prosecutor like Mr. Lelling arguing effectively, that the man, because he essentially brought his wife into the scheme and so forth, and he was the organizer leader, he probably, he might have higher guidelines as a result of that, which would put him solidly in Zone D, if he got an enhancement for being an organizer leader. The judge doesn't have to do it. The question is whether the judge should stop and think, is sending this woman to prison a good use of government funds when we have, BOP is 14% overcrowded right now, understaffed, 994-J, I think it is, tells the Commission to take into account, in devising the guidelines, the impact on the prison population, and to take steps to avoid increasing it? Well, the guidelines, up until, I think it's about 2012, ratcheted up the federal prison population year after year after year, along with minimum--
Is the population increasing or decreasing now?
I'm sorry?
If we look at current numbers, is the prison population increasing or decreasing now?
It is slightly increased, I mean, excuse me, slightly decreased in recent years. However, I think with the department's new guidance with respect to implementation of mandatory minimums and the like, I'm not sure that that trend is going to continue.
Those relate to drug offenses.
I'm sorry?
I think your argument relates to drug offenses, essentially. The increase in confinement in prisons and so forth, I think, can be attributed to charging and to convictions in drug offenses. I don't think white-collar offenses necessarily increased the, maybe they have. I'm unaware of that.
Well, perhaps I lost the thread of my point, but here it is. My point is that if this proposal resulted in fewer people going to prison, that would reduce the prison population.
Yes.
And I'm not saying that would reverse, continue the trend or reverse the trend, but it would at least reduce the population by not spending money on sending people to prison who don't need to be there, either for purposes of specific deterrence or for purposes of reduced recidivism, who would actually, in studies seem to demonstrate, pose less of a danger if they were on some sort of probation or supervised release with all the evidence-based practices that U.S. probation has come up with in recent years.
I take it, Ms. Conrad, that you would recognize that the offender you described, a bank teller who steals $200,000, that there are principles about the seriousness of the offense and general deterrence that cut the other way?
I recognize it, that certainly, as I said, a capable prosecutor could argue, and obviously, in this case, did make arguments about why that person should go to prison because a variance was available. But I think that there are other defendants similarly situated, who perhaps the loss isn't as high, perhaps the circumstances are not the same, and it's just a question of considering the alternative. And I disagree with Mr. Lelling respectfully, because I do not think the guidelines as written do recommend probation, even in Zone A. They make it available, but they don't recommend it. And that is a failure to implement 994-J.
Commissioner Blaitho, do you have any questions? If you're there. We appreciate both of you appearing today. We have your written testimony as well. Thank you for a spirited presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.